Good evening, everyone. We're just letting you know we're gonna wait a few minutes or till our last board member shows up before we start. Should be here any minute. As a matter of fact. I thought I heard the door.
North Carolina.
Kind of east coast, it doesn't look like, huh? It's kind of interesting, isn't it?
So 2:00 AM. 2:00 AM Friday. 2:00 AM Saturday.
2:00 AM Saturday, what that would mean?
We'd be getting drenched. Yeah, we'd be in...
Oh, midday.
We'd be in Thursday.
Yeah.
To account.
The whole of the state. See, that's exactly where my flight is supposed to land. Considering I haven't written my... Did you see some of those houses that were... not houses, that the shore over on the water where the stairs are all a mess again? Over Town Neck, I think it's Town Neck.
Didn't see it.
You didn't see it? I'll send you photos from Facebook. Looked like it was all... Over the beginning, you didn't hear that?
No, I'd like to see it.
All right.
Here he is. All right. Not a problem. Knew you were coming, bolden in the window. All right, good evening, everyone. It is now 6:03 on September 24th. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals. Please stand for this pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of Appeals is comprised of five regular members and one alternate member. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If only four members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel 9. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. The board asks that if anyone is recording this meeting, please notify the chair. Thank you very much, so noted. All right, can I get approval of the minutes for 8:13 and 8:27?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen and ladies, there is no old business to discuss. There is no new business to discuss. There is no open items and the purpose of this is just to vote to reconsider the 24-14-15 Howland Lane special permit culling. And I'm gonna defer to Ralph to just kinda give a procedural background.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just a note that after the last meeting associated with 2414, the chair approached the planning office and asked if there's a possibility for reconsideration. We reached out to town council and the possibility for reconsideration of the vote exists if we could... If you take the action prior to 100 days of closing. We are within that time period right now. So the board, this may be a bifurcated action. The first action the board will need to take is, one, to vote to reconsider 2414. If the vote... if the board votes affirmatively to do that, then you are in deliberation for 2414. No new testimony can be introduced, all the testimony and everything you have from the previous meetings. If you need... we have the file. If you need anything, as a reminder, we're here to sort of help you out with that. But again, no new testimony can be taken in 2414. So the first part is vote to reconsider. If that vote is in the affirmative, then you go on to deliberation for 2414. If it's not, then the matter's closed.
Understood. All right, so I ask for a motion to consider... Oh, go ahead, Mary.
Well, on what grounds?
No public comment. No public comment, please sit down, sir. No public... no, there's no public comment. We're here to decide a situation, please sit down. The meeting's been closed, there's no more public comment. Thank you.
Will there be any explanation as to why this committee is...
Well, you can sit here and listen to...
Is there any... can you explain to me why you are reopening this special permit decision?
Sir, we're just... we're gonna discuss that right now. So if you sit down and listen, you'll know exactly why we're here.
Has this ever happened before, by the way?
Yes.
It has.
All right, Mary, to your question.
So I was just gonna say, before you ask for a motion to open, on what particular grounds?
I just sensed that there was some confusion when the decision was made that this was... The permit was gonna be denied. And I didn't understand that personally and I just asked the planning department to say, can we just reconsider this to make sure everybody's on the same page? Either with their original vote or making some changes to the conditions that would make things more comfortable. If not, so be it. But I just felt that, you know, this was a situation where, just like we run into situations where the bylaws have changed and someone now needs a variance to do something they could've done before the bylaws changed. In this situation, the woman is doing nothing different than she has done for eight years, has had no complaints against her or in the situation she has, does not intend to drastically change anything. And now she's gonna be almost penalized because we denied the special permit. And that was why I asked Ralph to see if we wanted to reconsider. And again, that's what this board's all about. Everyone's got their own opinion.
Right.
And I don't speak for anybody, but I just felt that it was something I wanted to bring up.
I see, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just, Mr. Chair, a question. So if we vote to reconsider, we would revisit findings, conditions, and then...
Pretty much conditions.
Essentially revisit the...
Well, it hasn't been filed yet, so there's been no official denial nor approval.
Okay.
I would make a motion to reconsider the vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that... here's where we're at. The... you know, I kind of just explained to you how I felt and I need Mary and Chase to explain how they feel in order to decide whether are we gonna deny it or approve it? Or is there changes you'd be comfortable with that will allow us to go forward?
You can go first and then I'll go, if you want.
Yeah, I voted no because of the lack of condition on numbers. The original application, I think, was for 25. At one point, I thought it was amended to 20. I think it may have been further amended to eight at one point, but I... at the time of my vote, I was...
I was gonna say, I never heard that. I heard... when I watched it, I saw that, I heard and I read it, I said, she talked about if she ever had a litter of puppies, she had the potential that they could be 25 dogs, meaning they would be temporarily there as, you know, you have 25 little puppies, they're gone and now you're back down to your original... To six, or whatever they are. So I never took it as she wanted a permit for 25 dogs because they're under three months' old and she could have them anyway, so.
Agreed, of course, yeah. It was in the original written application. So for me, I took it on face value, without the condition.
No, I understand.
I took it on face value of there was pretty lengthy conversation with the applicant about personal versus commercial.
Right.
And then the last... The applicant said that I would potentially board other dogs. It... for me, I took it on face value.
No.
And I said, no, this is becoming a commercial kennel, so no, I would not.
Well, I think the last correspondence, and I think it was confusion on her part as well, that the last correspondence I saw was that she agreed to live by the letter of the law of the bylaws for a personal kennel. You know, she may have said she was gonna do this, but she didn't understand, I think, that she couldn't do that and she was willing to live by the law as described in the bylaws. And that wouldn't sway me because I agree with you in your first comment.
My only other logic, just to explain myself on the proposal of that condition was, I know the bylaw doesn't... It defines the kennel more than four. And you're right, obviously, pre-existing, she has six dogs. By no means am I looking to limit her dogs. I simply wanted to specifically permit the number of dogs they had at the time.
Well, again, what number do you feel comfortable with?
I don't know. I know, I think she amended it to eight. I know she has six. The applicant has six. I guess, just on the fundamental value, just for the amount of detail that we go through and... Conditions and criteria to have... it struck me as we should permit what the applicant is asking for. And that's why I was hung up on that was... And that's not to say someday maybe somebody does walk in and say, hey, I have 10 dogs. Okay, well, then you'd permit that applicant for that specific set of criteria. Just like any other applicant. You'd have a specific set of criteria.
Well, as the bylaw reads, there is no limit. And how many of these have we issued not concerned about a limit?
Up until, I think this is the first applicant that asked for 25.
Right, right.
Which I thought was a bit unusual to have somebody...
I think our process was a little flawed because usually with almost every application we have, the question comes from the chair. Are there any conditions we want to impose? And when we asked for conditions, we were instructed that, no, we couldn't do that. And so that didn't make sense to me. Now, I know I'm a fairly new board member, but that just didn't make sense to me because we always ask that question. And I know it is within our authority to impose limitations and safeguards when we see it appropriate. And so I listened to the people that were in the audience. They were very concerned and that's the whole purpose of a hearing, is to, yes, consider an application, but to also consider the other people that might be affected by it. And so when we were told that we could not impose any conditions, I saw that as a flaw in our process. And as a result, I couldn't move forward in approving.
I understand. Now Ralph, what was town council's comment on putting a number on the permit?
They said, generally speaking, because it's an open-ended, it doesn't preclude you from putting a number on it. It has not been challenged in court, so if the board does feel it is within your purview to put a number on, you can. Town council didn't know if it would... like if the applicant decides to challenge it in court, but because there's no specific condition on that.
The law does say we can impose limitations. So that word limitations can be interpreted in a number of ways.
I'm just relaying what town council shared with us, so.
Someone complains about, my neighbor's gonna build a house, it's too tall, it's gonna block my view. You're entitled to a certain height, but we're gonna limit to their height on their house?
It has to be reasonable, has to be reasonable. The limitation, I would suggest, if it's gonna... so that if it does get appealed, you know, you can back it, you can justify it. That's... that would be my comment.
It's measurable. And my point being, Chris, was like, and Eric, is that it's measurable, right? Like, it's gotta be something measurable here, right? That's my...
We do focus our conditions on something that's enforceable. And how do we enforce this? Are we gonna have building commissioner going over there and counting dogs?
It's not within his purview, under the law. It would be under the purview of the...
Why, it's zoning, though. It's a special permit.
It's not... yes, and under the zoning law, it would not be the building...
It would be a violation of the special permit.
Yes, but it's not the building inspector that would be the person who would be...
But he would have to enforce it?
No, he's not the one that...
Because it's a special permit.
It's natural resources.
Whether they do the counting, the special permit gets enforced by the building commissioner.
It's not what the... the law actually says.
In theory, they can anything, right? If somebody, whether it was building or use or whatever, if somebody filed a complaint, just like, I don't know, we see stuff that...
The dog officer in the town.
It is, and yes, somebody, anybody could approach, you know, as the enforcement officer. Sure, hey, I've got a complaint. We've seen it before, I'd say it would follow that same... And at least then you've got... to me, again, I think it, if anything, clarifies the issue because then you have a set of criteria that it's either meeting or it isn't. Much like a house, it's either it's the height or it isn't. Like, it's very factual, in my...
It's a limit, it's a safeguard, both of which we're allowed to...
So how do you arrive at that number?
I didn't propose that number. I thought... somebody said that she amended the application, is that correct? Did she amend the application?
Within the file, she had sent in another narrative that's saying up to eight dogs.
Okay, well, there you go. So I don't think we impose that number. She said eight, to me, that's more acceptable.
Are agreeing to...
Yes, we're more... that's more of an acceptable number.
Are we willing to agree to what's...
That's right, that's exactly right.
For the permit. And that was how, at the time, my vote was, no, I'm not willing. I think it was too ambiguous, but if that's been amended, do I think that's... That's just me, you know, that seems reasonable. You know, again, criteria, is it not unlike other, you know, we've heard other kennel cases, you know? I think everybody's been... I can't think of another case where we've seen a proposal for a proposed maximum number.
I think there was, there is one, and I think it was for six dogs. There was one for six.
My memory's... I don't know, that's me.
I believe so, in Sandwich.
I mean, I've never been on... maybe I wasn't on it, but we've never had one that we limited or had a proposal.
Do we?
I don't recall seeing it.
Maybe not that I ever personally sat on it, it could've been when I was gone.
I think the individual requested six dogs on Liberty Street.
So if the applicant is willing to self-impose a limit, we can certainly accept that.
I would agree. Now, is it agreeable to the other members of the board to do that and adjust the condition to say no more than eight dogs?
Yeah, I think it's... you take the case on its own merit. Does that seem reasonable for this applicant and this particular set of criteria?
That's right.
That seems reasonable, for my two cents.
And for us to do it's fine, I think, but...
I would agree with that, yeah.
What's that?
Risk it.
The limit?
No, I think if it ever was challenged, we will use, but if it's not challenged, it's okay.
If it was self-imposed, then... Why she would wanna fight that?
She would.
My only other... in the spirit of like, we're here, you know, we wanna help people navigate... And I wanna be like, we want her... we want the applicant to be in agreement with the... Right? Like, we wanna find a...
Yes.
My... but point I'm driving at is that if things change, and I think, say, a use changes or, you know, we're not... It's fluid, like if that special permit were to change or some... the use changes or something changes, like there's nothing stopping the applicant from coming back and saying, hey, you know what? Like anything, I wanna amend my permit, you know, or I wanna change it. You know, I don't think we're drawing a hard line of permanency.
My concern is it becomes very arbitrary. I mean, we... I would not gonna be the one to tell someone that you're only capable of four dogs, but you're capable of sex. I just don't think that's really out of call. And that's why, you know, if you guys are really concerned about it, you should get this definition amended and say, okay, it's up to X amount of dogs and that's all you can have. And beyond that, you know, you have to do something different or you have to have a professional kennel. But I think they deliberately, this definition was left the way it was because, you know, who's to say? Some people can't manage one dog, some people can manage 10.
I'm with you, Jim. No, I...
And that's why I think it's difficult for us to impose limits upon people. You know, it's their right, you know, that people wanna have pets and, you know, do their thing. And I understand they have to respect their neighbors and they have to be able to, you know, get along with them and not have their privileges or their rights of pet ownership to infringe upon others. And that's where the other rules, our other bylaws kick in, where, you know, we have noise bylaws and that type of thing, which governs it. But again, I mean, I think we're kinda getting in a circular argument because if the applicant herself has said, hey, if that makes everybody satisfied, that's what we leave.
And again, it's nothing with the individual, it's... We've looked, where is the property, how big is it, what's the condition of the neighborhood? We heard the public, you know, you'll have different applicant... they'll all be different, you know?
No, I agree. And I wouldn't wanna be in the position of telling people what they can and can't do because it's very difficult for us, from my perspective, to determine what someone's capable of handling on their own. And I just, you know, I think that whenever the government gets into dictating personal choices, it's...
I agree, I agree. Again, I'm purely looking at it as, it's not the individual, it's the... It's the set of criteria for the applicant and the community and where is the lot? And it has nothing to do with how competent I think the individual person is.
Are we comfortable with adding a condition of maximum of eight dogs and then taking a revote?
Sure, I mean, that's...
I'm comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that.
The applicant has... she's...
Self-imposed it on himself at this point, so I'm not truly concerned about us coming up with an arbitrary number, which I wouldn't...
Agreed, yeah.
But if she's saying this is what she's going to do, then I'd have to go with that.
So I would say, well, if you want, I'll read through the findings and we can add that as a finding that the applicant has indicated.
What is that, as a finding?
A finding that the applicant has stated that she's willing to limit her boarding to eight dogs.
The fact that she's presented to us going forward.
Important because if it does get challenged, it's part of the permit, you know, she wants it that she deserved more dogs, well, she asked for eight and that's what we gave her. Okay, so the... Just add to the procedural history. So the application was from section 1330 and 2220 of the zoning bylaw for property located at 15 Howland, which was filed on May 30th. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was opened on June 25th and closed on July 9th. The application was not accompanied by a site plan. The board reviewed the application, all of the materials submitted. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the board received and gave due consideration to the testimony. At the public hearing, the following members attended: Neve Ontario, Killian Van Buskirk, and Foley. And it's noted that Mr. Van Buskirk missed one meeting but did see the recording. Okay, so...
Do we have to include something there about the fact that... okay.
Just gonna do that, so we're gonna add to that. So what was the date that we voted to deny that permit initially?
The 27th. Yes, August 27th.
Through the chair, in the findings, I would suggest that the board considered to act unfavorably as opposed to deny the permit.
I'm putting this in procedural history?
No, 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 yeah, yeah. On August 27th, the board decided to act unfavorably because it wasn't...
Wasn't denied?
Yeah, because it was...
It was what?
It was a majority vote in favor, but because of the count, it was acted unfavorably upon. That's the language that's used, so.
So on August 27, 2024, the board voted to act unfavorably by a vote of 3-2 in favor of approval. Satisfactory? And then we're going to, on today's date... Okay, so on September 24, 2024, the board voted to reconsider their action on October 27, 2024. Good enough?
Good.
So the findings, the Board of Appeals finds that this application meets the requirements of Section 9 Mass General Law, Chapter 48. Subject property is located within the R2 zoning district. The applicant wishes to operate a personal kennel consisting of eight dogs, accessory to a residential use. Section 1330 requirements, the Board of Appeals does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. The board finds that hazardous nuisance or congestion will not be created. The board finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood and the board finds that there is no derocation from the intent of the bylaw, such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. The eight dogs, that was not in the application, correct? There was no specific number in the application?
It was in her narrative.
The kennel has been licensed in operation for eight years, so we're gonna say the existing kennel. The building commissioner states there have been no complaints related to the kennel operation. Still remaining true. The dogs will reside in the primary residence as described in the applicant's narrative.
The only... and I, if I may, at the previous meeting, we had made a note that we were gonna specifically say the applicant intends to operate a personal kennel as one finding. And then the next was gonna be the applicant is not operating a commercial. Just to clarify...
and then the next was going to be the applicant is not operating a commercial, just to clarify.
Well, it's in here, in the findings, the applicant wishes to operate a personal kennel.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, that's, thanks, yeah, I was just trying to clarify kennel.
Was there anything else in findings?
Nothing I have.
Okay, so I guess we don't, we're saying prior, we don't have to talk about the lack of a actual kennel structure.
The outside, was there a comment about the outside? It was a comment that I thought one of the findings was something to the effect that the owner agreed not to keep the dogs outside.
Well, we just have the finding that the dogs will reside in the primary residence.
That's what it was, sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
So are there any other findings?
Excuse me, sir?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the conditions. At the public hearing, the Board of Appeals considered potential conditions of approval for the special permit. The Board of Appeals voted that the following conditions of approval shall be imposed upon any approval of a special permit and that these conditions are reasonable and that the applicant and its successor and interests shall be bound by the conditions. So failure to comply with all the conditions set forth in the decision shall terminate the grant of the special permit pursuant to the requirements of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw, section thirteen thirty. The grant of the special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction or occupancy of the site unless such transfer is authorized in this permit or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of the special permit excluding such time prior to pursuant away to the termination of an appeal referred to in Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. This special permit should not take effect until it's recorded at the municipal county registry of deeds and a copy of the recorded special permit is provided to the Board of Appeals. The special permit is limited for the use to the property owner and not open to the public. Kennels shall be limited to eight dogs owned by the property owner aged three months or older. Fecal matter is to be removed off-site and not composted or buried on-site. Commercial bordering and or training is not permitted. I was saying, are not permitted. Anything further?
I think we covered it.
Okay, I will move the conditions.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
After reviewing the application, the plan and other materials submitted and after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the Board hereby approves the special permit application for property located at fifteen Howland as shown on Assessor's Map, forty-eight, parcel zero zero one, for the purpose of operating a personal kennel accessory to the residential use. I will move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there is no Board discussion. There is no other matters reasonably anticipated by the Chairman, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.